Good evening, everyone. I'll call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday evening, November 21st, 2022. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have 27 items on our agenda, and I will ask the city clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council meeting, October 17th, 2022.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and second to accept and place on file, the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Are those in favor? Opposed? The minutes are filed, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Two.
From Council President Ossing, introduction of new firefighters for the city of Marlborough.
At this time, I'll welcome the chief, the two assistant chiefs, our three new firefighters, our new captain, and our new lieutenant. And I'll let the chief do all the announcements, and then, as they've been briefed, they each get a 10-minute dissertation. Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
That was very good. You got all those positions and... So, good evening, Mr. President and City councilors. My name is Kevin Breen, and as your fire chief, I am pleased to join you this evening to announce important personnel actions at Marlborough Fire Department. Accompanying me this evening are on- and off-duty members, including Assistant Chiefs Gogan and Emmanuelson, and others. All present to support are three newest firefighters and two veteran firefighters who were recently promoted. I'm going to start tonight by introducing the three new firefighters.
Can I interrupt you just one second?
Certainly.
For the family members, come on in and take pictures, because they love to see the pictures when they're done. Go ahead, chief, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. And we love that you're all present, too. And I'm not going to embarrass you, but I am going to name some of you. In August of this year, Marlborough Fire Department hired nine new firefighters. You may recall already meeting six of them of the previous, of the total of nine. You may have remembered that there were six already here. I was on vacation at the time, so that was back in August, I believe. The remaining three new hires are here this evening, having recently graduated from their firefighter recruit training program at the Massachusetts Fire Academy. And I'm going to begin by introducing candidate number one, or firefighter number one, Gus H. Frankie. This is right here, to my left. Firefighter Frankie graduated from Athol High School in the top 10% of his class and served as class president. He went on to enlist in the United States Marine Corps and attained the rank of sergeant before leaving the Corps in 2018. En route to a firefighting career, he next pursued and obtained certification as an emergency medical technician while also working as a truck driver operator. Gus also achieved the rank of Eagle Scout as a member of the Boy Scouts of America. Finally, he was the recipient of the Richard N. Bangs Award, having graduated first in his class at the Massachusetts Fire Academy. Gus Frankie. Next, in the right order, is James J. Caciapalia. He is joined this evening by his girlfriend Kristin. He, firefighter Caciapalia, is a new resident to the Metro West area, having moved here from North Carolina. I should also mention, his brother also serves with us as a firefighter, Ralph Caciapalia. James is a United States Army Combat Veteran and served our country first as an Army Ranger and then as a civilian assigned to the Department of Defense. Additionally, James holds a Bachelor of Science degree from the University of New Hampshire. Last, but certainly not least, is Jesus A. Murillo. Firefighter Murillo is a resident of Worcester but grew up here in Marlborough and graduated from Marlborough High School. Jesus enlisted in the United States Marine Corps in 2012, is currently serving as a platoon sergeant in the United States Marine Corps Reserves. Although he has, he had no previous experience as a firefighter, he has a solid history of relatable work in maintenance, training, hazardous materials handling, and is fluent in Spanish. We are very happy to have selected so many great candidates to serve as Marlborough firefighters, and we welcome all of them and their families to our Marlborough Fire Department family. All right, you guys move to the left and let the next stars come up. Secondly, I'm also happy to announce the recent promotions of two MFD members. First, to my left, is Captain Michael D. Peckham. We are joined this evening with his family, an extended family, his wife Erin, children, who was also his son, is a firefighter with us, Alex. His son-in-law is a firefighter with us, Alex. His daughter Taylor and his son, Thomas. Two children, two of his other children are not present this evening. Captain Michael Peckham was recently promoted from his position as a fire lieutenant to fire captain on August 12th, 2022. Captain Peckham has served our city for more than 31 years, including times serving as a dispatcher, a firefighter, a fire lieutenant, and now fire captain. He holds numerous certifications, including firefighter level two, fire officer, and emergency medical technician. Captain Peckham is currently assigned to headquarters at 215 Maple Street on Battalion Three. Congratulations to Captain Peckham. And then finally, Lieutenant Danny F. Martins. We are joined this evening by his wife Emily and his two daughters, McKenna and Madeline. Lieutenant Danny F. Martins was recently promoted from his position as a firefighter to the position of fire lieutenant on August 15th, 2022. Lieutenant Martins has served our city since being hired as a firefighter in 2018. Prior to this, he was a full-time professional firefighter in Southborough. He holds numerous certifications, including firefighter level two, fire officer, and emergency medical technician, paramedic level. Lieutenant Martins is currently assigned to Station Number Three, 268 Boston Post Road East on Battalion Two. We are very happy to have these two highly qualified fire officers and wish them well in their new assignments. And that's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Captain Michael, Lieutenant Danny, Jesus, James, Gus, wish you guys, I'm speaking on behalf of the council and the President of Marlborough, continued success, health, and safety in all you do to support the city. We appreciate it and thank you very much. So, all the best. And you guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you very much for supporting them. Thanks. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we've got Agenda Item Number Three.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the petition of Verizon, New England, to lay and maintain underground conduits with wires and cables to be placed therein under the public way on Des Moines Drive, Order Number 22-108722. This hearing, public hearing, has been requested to be opened, and no testimony being heard and continued to December 5th, 2022.
Okay, so I'll open this public hearing. It typically be conducted in four stages, with a public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the city council. The applicant was unable to make it and asked for it to be continued, so we will continue this public hearing with no testimony till Monday, December 5th, at 8:00. Agenda Item Number Four.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for modification of a special permit from Brian Martinelli on behalf of Dish Wireless to install three new antennas on the existing cell tower, along with a 5-by-7 platform at 860 Boston Post Road East, Order Number 22-108710.
Again, this public hearing will be taken up in four stages. First, with a public speaking in favor. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And finally, questions from the council. So I'll open the first part of the public hearing with public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. I'll ask that you state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. Oh, good evening now. My name is Yassin Norrie. Address 52 Ashley Street, Boston, Mass., 02128.
Okay, if you would give us an overview of the project, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Good evening, members of the council. In front of you, we have an application for a special permit, a wireless special permit. I'm here on behalf of Dish Wireless, as they intend to co-locate on an existing freestanding structure over at 860 Boston Post Road. The overall height of the existing structure is about 144 feet, with Dish looking to co-locate right there somewhere in the middle at 96 feet. Dish will also require about a 5-by-7 platform that they're building at the ground level. It's about a foot high. And on the structure itself, Dish is looking at three new panel antennas, six radios, again at that 96-foot rad, and then down at the bottom, their radio equipment or baseband unit equipment to be housed inside their steel plat, or on top of their steel platform. The structure will remain unmanned, so it is still, it's still going to stay the same as it's standing today, just co-locating Dish's equipment. That's really all that entails.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Please come down to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Steve Peck. My address is 64 Victoria Lane in Marlborough. My question is, what is the purpose of these antennas?
Dish Wireless is a new national carrier. When Sprint was sold off to T-Mobile, we went down to three carriers. Dish is acting as another competitive entity in that place.
Are you saying these antennas are for mobile phones?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other, any other members of the public with questions? Any questions from the members of the public? Any questions from members of the public? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Are there any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city council? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just have one question as far as the antennas. You said there's going to be three antennas?
Correct.
Is the intent is to create an omnidirectional perspective, like they're all going 120 degrees apart?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. They're all in one azimuth, if you will, 0, 120, 360. It's not specifically going to be that, but somewhere in...
Somewhere in that area. Yeah, okay. And what technology is going to be broadcasted? Is this 5G, 4G?
It's a combination of LTE and 5G.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Any other members of the councils with questions? Any members of the city council with questions? Any members of the city council with questions? Seeing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in public service. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Five.
Now is the time for the public hearing on signed special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Wayside Crossing for a proposed EMC sign that will serve as an ordering board for the Starbucks drive-through at 661 Boston Post Road East, Order Number 22-108724.
I'll talk slowly when I set that up. This public hearing will be taken up in four stages. First, with a public speaking in favor. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And finally, questions from the council. So I'll open the first part of the public hearing with a public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, President Ossing. Councilors, for the record, Brian Falk, Attorney at Myrick O'Connell, 100 Front Street in Worcester, here on behalf of the applicant, Obashan Realty Company, Inc. This is an application under the sign ordinance for a proposed electronic messaging center sign, or EMC sign. The sign will serve as an ordering screen for the Starbucks drive-through at 661 Boston Post Road East, which is the Wayside Plaza. This is our site here, along Boston Post Road East, located in front of the existing target. If you've been by recently, you'll see the Starbucks is nearly complete. City council granted a special permit and site plan approval for the Starbucks drive-through in 2021. This is the proposed sign and ordering screen for the drive-through. The display screen will change between a menu screen and an order screen displaying order information while the drive-through customer speaks to an employee inside. Inspection services previously held that these screens qualify as EMC signs under the sign ordinance and require the city council's approval. The council approved a nearly identical sign at the Starbucks drive-through on Maple Street in 2021, right next to the St. Mary's branch. This is a plan of the Starbucks drive-through of the site. A little hard to see. I think you've got hard copies with your packets. Ordering screen is labeled with the letter "I" on that plan. Although the site is bounded by retail plazas and Route 20, and the sign is not clearly visible or audible from the public way of residents, Starbucks can adjust the brightness of the screen and audio levels as may be necessary. This sign was also part of the master sign plan that was submitted to the council at your last meeting, which was required under the Wayside zoning district sign requirements. You have a draft decision in your meeting packet that was approved by the city solicitor. This decision is very similar to the set of conditions that was approved for the Maple Street Starbucks last year. That concludes our presentation. We're happy to address your questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Attorney Falk. Are there any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Are there any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Are there any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just got one question. When's the expected time that this Starbucks is going to open?
They're hoping December. December or January.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in the hands of the city council. Agenda Item Number Six.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for a special permit from Attorney Terrence Morris on behalf of 272 Lincoln Street LLC to build a 12-unit multifamily dwelling with accessory parking to be located at 272 Lincoln Street, Order Number 22-108709.
Again, this public hearing will be taken up in four stages. First, with a public speaking in favor. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And then finally, questions from the city council. So I'll open the first part of the public hearing with a public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Again, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Counsel Dumas. Sorry, I just, I had to step out. I have to recuse myself from this vote. Thank you.
Please let the record reflect that Counsel Dumas will not be participating in this. Thank you. I'm sorry. You proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. For the record, my name is Terry Morris, and I am an attorney with Law Offices at 57 Elm Road in Newton, and I'm here this evening representing the owner of the property, 272 Lincoln LLC. Counselors, four years ago, almost to the day, on November 19th, 2018, the council, in its wisdom, adopted amendment to the ordinance establishing the Neighborhood Business District. Among the purposes and objectives of that district were to encourage retail establishments and services that primarily serve the surrounding neighborhood, enable multifamily residential or mixed-use projects to be developed, particularly on undeveloped parcels or underutilized parcels, and encourage reuse or redevelopment of existing commercial, industrial, and institutional properties located in the neighborhood, and assist the neighborhood to reach its full potential by encouraging restaurants, uses that take advantage of nearby open space, such as the Asabat River Rail Trail, and uses that take advantage of adjacent walkable One would ask, then, given the varied uses that the, that the Neighborhood District regulations are attempted to achieve, that how would a multifamily development, which is what we propose today, which is a 12-unit multifamily development in this zone, further those objectives? Well, one of the things that increasing, encouraging restaurants to relocate and other retail establishments is a critical mass, market mass. And I think one of the, one of the things you'd like to establish is to reint, is to introduce multifamily housing, more units, more, more potential customers to support these retail establishments, as well as to encourage other, other establishments to locate in the neighborhood. You see, shown on the screen behind me and over there is the location. Not too far away is at the end of the, of the Asabat Rail Trail. I believe it ends, it ends, I always knew I shouldn't be doing this. It ends pretty right, almost right there, in close proximity. Actually, we could show, these are some fixtures there. You can see there, at the end of the trail, in the background, is the location of the subject site. We have several different views, one certainly from Cashman Street looking west, and the other one from Lincoln Street looking north. This is a, I'm going to go to this one, I could go to this one, site plan? This is the site plan. One of the unusual features of the site is it's, it is a corner lot, as you can see, with frontage on Cashman as well as Lincoln. It's also fairly triangulated. And in addition to that, it represents a change in topography from Cashmere to Lincoln Street of approximately one story in height. So one of the challenges of developing this site was to place a building on it by taking advantage of the topographical change. And one way we did that was to basically locate virtually all of the parking. We're providing parking for two spaces per unit, as is required under the code, for each of the 12 spaces, and 18 of those spaces are located within the building, which enables us to basically maximize the site plan for this project. One of the things that's shown here is the roof plan. Actually, we're going to go to, the next plan is the parking plan. As I said, 18 of the 24 spaces are located, are located within, within the building itself. The other spaces, four of the spaces are located north of the site with access, vehicular access from Lincoln Street, and the other, the garage is located, second curb cut accessing the garage from Cashman Street. The significance of the location of those two openings is they're done at the remote, the furthest possible remote from the intersection, which is done to basically maximize pedestrian and vehicular safety coming in to and from the site. This, it also, you can see from the topographical changes on the board that the change in topography going up Lincoln Street, and now we will change to another view. We'll go through, back to zoning. Of course, since we're here for zoning relief, one of the measures that one does look at and the zoning provides for is dimensional controls to establish how well the development fits within the location, the site on which it's located. You'll see that the minimum lot area for this district is 5,000 square feet. We have an 18,000-square-foot lot. The minimum lot frontage, we have sufficient lot frontage. The front setbacks, both front, rear, and side, we meet all of those requirements. The height of the building, two and a half stories, 52 feet max. We are at three stories, but that is 33 feet. We have actually, the third story is not, it's a low grade, and my architect can explain that. Maximum lot coverage is 75%, and we at one-half of that lot coverage. You see that the number of units, the total volume of the building is 20,252 feet. Here we have various views of, this is the front elevation from Lincoln Street. And I think what I will do now is, I will turn the screen, he's not accustomed to custom speaking, but I will have our architect stand up, because he has designed what I think is, is a absolutely handsome building, and I'd let him explain how he put the elements of the building together.
Thank you, Terry. My name is Ron Burke. I'm an architect from Waltham, Mass., 9 Morton Street in Waltham. And we immediately recognized the significance of this site, being at the termination of the rail trail, but also recognizing the city's desire to try to continue the rail trail to, to reach downtown. Working with the Economic Development Council, we came to understand, you know, how this, how this, this whole neighborhood was going to begin to come together, and we wanted to be a part of it, and we wanted to recognize the history of the area. Yeah, this, this is a view from Cashman Street. This is a view from Cashman Street entering into the building at the garage level. And as you can see, you can begin to understand the topography from Lincoln Street to Cashman Street, where we do pick up an additional level, which is not considered a story because of its percentage. So technically, it's a three-story building. But what we do is, is, you know, we enable the parking to be removed from the street, you know, very small footprint for paving and parking, both on the upper tier and the lower tier. Yep. So this is a view as if you were basically at the top of the hill on Lincoln Street. So you don't get the sense of an overall, you know, significant massing. The scale is residential. You know, it's a tripartite system, meaning there's a base, middle, and top. The elements are of a pedestrian scale and significant landscaping to create an environment which, which, which has a feel of home. This would be the view on, yep, sorry. This would be, be the view on Cashman Street. So the lower level is the parking area. What we envision there is probably a hard stucco, wouldn't be exposed concrete, it would be something that would have, you know, a nice coloration to it to fit the building. And to the left, where you see the two gentlemen, that would be the corner where we start to turn onto Lincoln Street. Yeah, these are various views from an isometric standpoint, just to give a sense of how the building is put together and, and how the massing is broken up into elements. On the roof, we have rooftop solar, as well as individual heat pumps for the residents. None of it will be visible. There's a parapet of about 18 inches to help hide any of that. This would be the entrance from Lincoln Street. So as you can see, we have a small parking lot on the left with the access to, both from a walkway and stairs to the front lobby. Now, the park, if you go back one, the park on the corner, the lower right-hand side, actually, if we go to the next view. Our building is an introduction to this area now. As you come over that hill, there's going to be a significant development on the right, right-hand side, and the area is being sort of reinvented. But we wanted to create an environment that would allow us to work with the city and create a pocket park that would be a transitional point between the end of the rail trail, an introduction into the site, and then the continuation of the rail trail. So this is a... So if you go, if you go to the next, so these are the original photos, and then we'll look at the views that you would see with the building in place. That would be one of them. If you go to the last two pages. So this is a, there's a view from Cashman Street, where in the, in the previous photograph, we saw the existing single-story building, if you go back one. And this is a view from the rail trail. You can see that we maintain the edge of the building along the rail trail. You across the street, and there would be a pocket park there, and then you could be redirected further down towards the downtown. And that concludes my, my presentation.
Thank you, Ron.
I think one of the things that I should have pointed out at the beginning, the existing site is currently used as a former auto repair facility, a rather deleterious use, a remnant from the prior zoning as business. We think one of the significant advantages of this particular development is the removal of that facility and, and replacement with a residential use that's more harmonious with the change in zone to neighborhood business. the change in zone to neighborhood business. And with that, Mr. President, members, that will conclude our presentation. We're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor?
Hello, my name is Stas Burden. I'm at 27 Jefferson Street, apartment 203. I just built one of these recently. And I'm pretty familiar with this lot. I would say that the current use is not auto shop. It was a finish master, which was a painting sales place. But anyway, there's also a huge billboard there, which I, I support this project. I think this looks good overall. I think it's something that I'd like to see. I like the views from, from the rail trail. I like that this is going to complement what's happening across the street. And I think it's a nice invitation to the downtown from the rail trail. So overall, I would say that really, I'm pretty pleased to see this happening. That's my two cents on this. But I also would like to say that, and it seems that, that first being, speaking in favor is the first in order here, but I have other questions, which I'll probably come back and ask questions. But part of it is, I would like to see a little bit more detail on the siding aspects of the building and ask questions about, you know, parking and such, because I just built one of those 11-unit building on Jefferson Street, which I can, I will probably be able to see this building from the top floor of my building. So in, with that, I just, I'd say I'm in favor of this. This looks pretty good to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Stas. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public. Questions from the public? Yes, sir.
I have probably two questions. Number one, what is gonna happen?
Name and address.
I'm sorry. We know you.
So my first question is, what's gonna happen to the billboard? I mean, does that property own the billboard? Do they rent it? Is it gonna be relocated somebody else or someplace else? But my, what was my second question? I get off on the billboard. Oh, are these going to be condominiums or apartments? If you may.
The president's intention is to have them be rentals.
The billboard?
The billboard will be removed.
Does that work, Nick? Any other members of the public with questions?
Good evening. I'm Steve Peck from 64 Victoria. I did not hear any provisions for electric vehicles.
We, they will be, all of the, all of the parking spaces within the garage will be made EV-ready. Some portion of those will actually be, and we will have charges installed. I, I thank you for asking that question because it allows me to basically elaborate more on the sustainability features of the building. You saw from the roof plan that we are having, we have solar panels and we also have heat pumps. This is going to be an entirely carbon-free building, all-electric. There will be no fossil fuels used to sustain the building or its residents. So, I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. That, this corner is kitty corner to another development that has been approved by the council. Will you be doing the construction at the same time as the other project or don't you know?
Well, this is my, this is my first foray before the council, the special permit granting authority, so I really can't speculate as to how long it might take to be approved, assuming we are approved. We take nothing for granted. So I would expect, we would hope that we could start construction in the spring, in the spring, late spring, probably.
Thank you. Next on my list is, you did not mention any snow removal provisions.
All the snow will be removed from the site.
And could you tell me what the exterior construction is?
Now we've reached the limit of my knowledge, if we hadn't already.
The, it will be wood frame construction. There'll be a composite material siding, both siding and trims, low-y windows, and, and there's probably a hard stucco on the lower section at the garage.
So you, it's gonna be a composite, not a vinyl?
Not a vinyl, no.
Thank you. Next question is, as this lot, what it was used for in the past, there may be some question. Have you had any, have we had a chance to do a check, an environmental check as to what the cleanup's gonna be?
We have, the, the site is clean.
My last question has to do, the other, I mentioned the other development. They have included in their development a gift to the city of a piece of the land for the rail trail and the development of outdoor facilities. Do you have any gift for the city in mind?
I think, if I can, if I can handle that one, Terry. Steve, it's not a gift, that's the trade-off for the purchase that the city made for the Lincoln Mechanic Street parcel, so that we're basically getting, instead of money back, we're getting in exchange for services, the, the building, the parking garage, and the work on Jefferson Street. So it's not a gift. But I'll let Terry answer what they want to do out front.
The idea, Ron mentioned the, the idea of creating a pocket park at where the intersection of the, the streets intersect and creates some open space. As you can see on the screen, depending upon the particulars of the landscape plan and going through the process of the, with the Urban Affairs, with the Urban Affairs Committee, it's possible that would, the, one of those outcomes could be a public easement, public use easement. But that, that would be something that would revolve from the Urban Affairs review of the, particularly, getting in the weeds, so to speak, about the petition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions from the public? Stas?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Jim Gakis. I live at 623 Stowe Road in Marlboro and I'm here talking on behalf of the Saints and Arjory Greek Orthodox Church. I guess a couple of questions would be that, you know, in light of the other development that's going on, 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 down the street from us at, across the church, has there been a traffic study or an anticipated traffic study to ensure, because we know what's gonna happen, or at least we anticipate what might happen with the development down the street and then what might be happening here. And I thought the pictures were great, but it had nothing to, it showed no traffic of any kind. And we know that as we live in the area and do the business of the church in the area, especially with the IC right down the street, that becomes a very congested area during the weekends. May happen that during the week, whether it's a funeral, wet, a funeral or other uses of the church, it's a very congested spot. So I'm just wondering whether or not there's been a traffic study, at least authorized or anticipated to be done at this point.
That's a legitimate question. While we haven't done a stra, a traffic study yet to date, with certainly, as we go through the process, we can have one, we can have one done. And so that that could be considered by the committee amongst other factors in reviewing this application.
Because it, some of those pictures were really, especially where the access is coming onto Lincoln and then onto Cashman, that Cashman Street one, I think, might be a little problematic because you're coming right down the hill and no one's gonna see that turn, that left-hand turn into that parking area. And I guess we talked about the invitation to the rail trail. Can you just talk a little bit about that? Because I'm not, I mean, I'm not a user of the rail trail. We have it there, I mean, we, people use it all the time, but, and then the access to downtown, you know, we also have the bike path that sits right across, you know, right at the church as you move through. So there really is no room as you drive down that street to go on either side. I think you're gonna find that'll get pretty congested quickly.
As I understand it.
It's the invitation for the rail trail.
As I understand it, there's a crosswalk there that move, basically moves, encourages pedestrians to cross the street at that point and then consider, continue on up the Prospect, Prospect Street to get eventually wound up on Main. So we, we're just trying to create, as, as Ron said, and, and something that invites people to go beyond where the rail trail ends. And we think that this is, this, hopefully, this will be that kind of inducement.
And thank you for being transparent with us. I guess the, the other question would be, this is the first that I've heard of what's intended for that site. So what responsibility do you all have to reach out to either tenants on that street or people that own houses and then us at Saints and Arjory, to talk about what you're trying to do? Because ultimately, this is the first time we're seeing it. And we hadn't been communicated at all prior to this. So I understand this is a meeting for a special permit, but just wondering what responsibility do you have to reach out to the neighbors of what the intended use of that property's gonna be?
So, so I'll answer that one. So part of the special permit process, they're required to notify butters within 300 feet, 400 feet of the project. So the church and all the budding neighbors should have got notification and they, we, they've turned in all the receipts for the cards that said they mailed out notification of this public hearing. So you should have received that, or someone at the church should have received it.
Fair enough. But in, but in terms of talking through what this could look like, is this our first opportunity with you?
This is your opportunity to comment on what you like and then you're always welcome as this moves through the process to contact Urban Affairs and members of the city council to give, to weigh in your thoughts as to what you like or don't like on the project. You're encouraged to do that if you'd like.
Great, fair enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Stas Burden, 27 Jefferson Street. I just had a couple of questions. So first is, there's a property on the same street, Cashman, on the same side as this property, which is a single-family home. Has, have you guys considered talking to these folks? And what is the proposed treatment of the boundary between this building and the building next door? Because it looks like overgrown weeds and it's not a very pleasant-looking building, right, touching your sight.
I can speak for the client as well as my own practice. I, I have been practicing the law in this area for more than, I hate to say it, more than 40 years. And it has been my experience that when these processes, regardless of whether there is, it's done in, in the, in the public forum, that we would reach out to people, our media to butters, particularly because there's a, they have a vested stake in what the, the lot lines that we share with them. And they're, I won't say they're given a carte blanche to decide what's there, but certainly their, their view, their input as to how the periphery of the property should be treated is taken seriously and will be incorporated into the final plan.
Okay. Another question is, the entrance from, into the garage from Cashman Street, is that a single door there? It looked like it was a single door. Is that 18-foot door or what type of door is it?
It's, it's a 16-foot door.
16-foot door, okay. And, and the garage, and it looks like the building, the garage itself doesn't have any, it's not an open, open-air garage, correct?
No, it is not.
Okay. And the elevator, there is an elevator in the building. I briefly looked at the plans, is, it's in front, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
In front of the building? And would you have to have a higher elevation where the elevator is on the roof?
Um, yeah, if we could move to one of the isometric views. So the elevator is located, whoop, back one? That one, yeah. Sorry. It's ready, there's a stair and elevator, as well as a stair here.
Yeah, and is, is there a rendering?
Yeah, there, yeah.
With the facade that we can see? So that, that elevation up there on the roof, okay.
Yeah, the renderings will show it in more of a context.
Okay.
Uh, next one, yeah, next one. So this is the stair and elevator overrun. So we do have a parapet and then the overrun exceeds above that by approximately three feet, three and a half feet.
Okay. And what is the plan for the water, how do you retain water that you are collecting from the roof? What's happening with the water?
Well, there'll be, there'll be underground tanks, leaching tanks.
Is it going to be under the building or on the site?
I believe it's on the side, Rick, right? Yeah, our civil engineer.
All right. And is this, is the plan to install the solar panels right away or is it a plan, just in general, to install them at some point in the future?
Um, no, Charlie, I think we install them right away, right? Yeah. Charlie's the builder.
Okay. Is there a location of electrical transformer that you identified?
I don't, we have not identified it.
Well, in my experience, it's been a little bit of a challenge to.
Yeah.
On the site that I had, location of it depends on the national grid. So national grid would pretty much dictate to some degree where it's located. So that, it's a, it's going to be a pretty large structure.
Yeah.
And there, and then if you have a drainage nearby, you will probably have to, probably have to put a pretty large pad underneath it. So it's gonna take a lot of room. And so it would, I would hate to see that in that pretty corner. So I'd like to, I'd like to understand, I'd like to see where you would want to put it in there.
Personally, I would look at, I've got a retaining wall that wraps around.
Yeah.
And this ramps up. I would like to see it tucked in behind the retaining wall so that it's not visible.
Yeah, they, they have some limitations and structure and the requirements about it. So just look into it, because they might end up, it may, might end up being that pretty corner that you're allocating as a park.
Yeah.
It might tell you that's where it has to go. And it will look, it wouldn't look very pleasant in there.
Yeah, thank you. That's good advice. So, yeah, so I guess that would be a coordination item with them, once we, once we present with them and see where the, where they want to actually bring it in and see if we have any type of negotiation for a location.
All right. And final question is, are there balconies there or are they, are like Juliet-type?
Those are Julietts on that side. There are balconies on the, on the other side.
Okay, all right. No more questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Stas. Any other questions from the public?
Father Greg Christakis, 203 West Hill Road and also with the church. We are blessed to have the rail trail right at the, the start of the rail trail right across from the church. And I'm an avid user of it. And I noticed that people, some people will park in our church parking lot, which we're happy to provide that for them. But even when it was a functioning business, and also now, lots of people park at that property to use the, the rail trail. So my question is, is the city making any provision for parking for these people? The church, we, we love hosting people, but we would not be able to accommodate everyone who's using the rail trail. So the question is, will the city make some kind of accommodation to, I guess, replace what is now the current parking for the rail trail?
So I'll take that, Chris.
Thank you.
So Father Greg, the Lincoln Mechanic Street property that we've just approved across the street, as Steve mentioned, there's a, there's plans for the city to have that corner right adjacent to the rail trail where I think, is it the pink building or the gray one? But the, the one that's right there, we're gonna, we'll have a parking, I think, believe it's 26?
22.
22? 22 parking spaces there with restrooms so that they should not have to be bothering the church parking lot anymore.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'll also add, we're redoing the lot next to Jefferson Street, that that'll be paved. And I don't remember how many parking spaces that has, but that'll also be in that, a available parking space with a ramp down to the rail trail.
Yeah, it would be nice to have some signs. What people do not know about the Jefferson Road?
I'm sure once this, it's finished, Stas, we'll have signs directing folks there. Any more questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition?
Good evening. My name is James Paul Akronis. I live at 20 D'Amico Drive. I am a member of the Saints and Arjory Greek Orthodox Church for 70 years. I'm sure all of you are aware of this lot. It's a beautiful building. I just can't imagine the size of this building on that small lot. I'm really in opposition of this project because I just don't understand how much need there is for multifamily housing in this downtown area where we have four... how much need there is for multifamily housing in this downtown area where we have four projects on the books. Not one has been occupied yet or built, yet we need to approve another one in such a small area. I think you all understand too that that area is a high life hazard. And I will kind of speak as a retired firefighter who responded to all these in-town medicals, emergencies, whatever. Staffing isn't much greater today than when I started in 1973. But we keep adding all these multi-level housing projects. And more so, you know, Chief Green has done a great job in maintaining the staff that he has. But I'm also speaking as a member of the church, the congestion that is up in that area at this time now with nothing there, with Immaculate Seption down the street, with Saints and Arjory there, we both have flourishing parishes. On a Sunday, it is a horror show. On any other religious holiday, weddings, as Father Greg has said, funerals, it gets quite congested. Now I get, the rail trail is the big attraction all of a sudden in Marlborough. And in infinite wisdom, we put a 12-foot bike path slash walking trail sidewalk on Cashman Street, which leaves 25 feet of street. Take five feet for parking on one side. Very difficult for traffic moving, especially on a Sunday. In the winter, let's address the snow removal. That's great. They're going to remove the snow, but what's the city going to do with two feet of winrow, five feet of parking? Doesn't leave much street area. I don't think enough thought has gone into this whole project, other than the fact that it's an empty lot, let's put a building there, and let's attract more people to reside at the end of the rail trail. You've got 200 and something apartments going 100 yards up the street. Mr. Stark's project is 100 yards on Jefferson Street. You've got Rose, Mr. Rose property. You've got Marilyn Green's property. You've got the one on Main Street. Not one place has been built nor occupied, yet we want to put another one in a high-density area. I just don't understand the need. I will comment, the fact that it is a beautiful building. I just don't think that it fits that spot. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Nick?
Nick Kofus, Bolton Street. Fasten your seatbelts. I want to thank the council for having us come and speak. I'm very appreciative. And I'm going to say 272 Lincoln Street, LLC, with a Newton address. Do you have any idea of our local needs? Okay? I think not. You've given a whole presentation, not one word meant for our church. And indeed, you mentioned a Sabit rail trail. You're not from here. You don't understand us. And I'm not criticizing your pronunciation. My point is, local people call it Asabit. You call it a Sabit, twice. So I'm going to say that there's no need for any more housing. And it's going to echo some of the thoughts that have been presented. There's no need for more housing in this area. The altar barely is a block away. 276 units and 400 parking spaces. The old armory is proposed as condos or, or, you know, apartments or something, just another block up the road. We don't need anything more. You know, Mark Oram voted against the altar project. Thank you, Mark. Just, God bless you. But the point is, only because there's no traffic study. And they have a traffic light at the corner of Lincoln Street and Mechanic Street. We got nothing like that down here. People fly down Lincoln Street from the west very quickly, and they, the road comes down there and it turns to the left. It's like a, you know, a, you know, blind driveway on the left-hand side as the road turns. All right. And we expect no increase in accidents? I think not. It's a very dangerous area. It's difficult enough dealing with the Lincoln Street-Cashman-Highland Street intersection without anything else there. And now you're going to have something put up, up a little bit higher on Lincoln Street? People aren't even going to have a chance to react to that. I'm not happy about that. You know, traffic entering on Lincoln Street from that location is going to be dangerous, and I believe it's going to be very irresponsible, especially with the light in, or the sunlight setting in people's eyes. Now, public safety aside, we've got a very thriving church less than 100 way, 100 feet away. And again, nobody mentioned anything about the church, which is going to be your biggest of butter. We pack that street several times a year. And they mentioned, you know, funerals. It can be Palm Sunday. It can be Easter. It can be Christmas. It can be weddings, baptisms, funerals. And we also rent out the space to the general public with the Holonakal. And sometimes this happens with a day or two notice. You know, you can plan Easter, but you can't plan, somebody dies, you have a memorial dinner at their, or for their family at the, at the church. And it's disconcerting, again, that nobody even mentioned the church. We've coexisted in this neighborhood for 100 years, 100 years. This project threatens our commitment to the city, and it puts in peril the city's understanding of our good faith neighborhood policy to the city of Marlborough. That Cashman Street roadway has already been narrowed recently, and that was to enhance access to the rail trail. We don't need more access. It's there. The city put it there. And lastly, and nobody's mentioned, and this is going to be an issue, our Labor Day festival. You don't even know about that. We have six or 7,000 people for Labor Day weekend there on that spot. Where are these people going to go? You know, and, and having a building there, you know, they'll find a place to park. Are the tenants of that building going to complain? Are they going to come back and try to complain to the city? Are they going to come back and try to sue us? Reminds me of the story, a few years ago, maybe a lot of, you remember this. There was a pig farm in Tuxbury, was there for 150 years. Then land around it was sold, houses were built, expensive houses. And then people came back and they sued the pig farm owner for smelling up their neighborhood. They should have known what they were getting themselves into. Are these people going to have any idea that they can't get in and out of their property comfortably on Labor Day? Are they going to know that? Is it going to be written in their lease? So, 272 Lincoln Street, LLC of Newton, do you care? Will you give full disclosure of what your residents will be experiencing? You're going to be long gone, you know, before this crowded neighborhood is messed up. You're going to be long gone. I'll be long gone. But the point is, it's going to go on for generations. Something like this gets built right there, you know, I mean, we're going to have to live with it, or other people are going to have to live with it for many, many years to come. You know, you can't possibly spin this except for a positive way, except for your own profit. And again, no offense, but this is a money grab. I believe that we can coexist with nearly any enterprise at this location. I really do. But not residential or condos. You could have the greatest pictures in the world, but in reality, it's a terrible place. I love the project. It looks great. But not there. My personal feeling. So I want to thank you, Mr. President, for having us, and also to you, the members of the, of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Are there any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city council. Councilor Oram?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation. Some of these questions you may need to do some research and get back to us at the Urban Affairs Committee. And if I'm not speaking loud enough, let me know because I know I'm wearing a mask and can't read my lips right now. Some of the questions were already answered that the general public asked. I was curious, how many bedrooms per unit are you planning for this facility?
Two, two each, right?
So there'll be?
24 bedrooms.
24 bedrooms. Okay, thank you.
If I could, Mr. Counselor. Bedrooms is always, as I said, I've been doing this for a long time, and the number of bedrooms is certainly a relevant question. I think one of the things one has to take into account when you're talking about whether a room is used as a bedroom or not as a bedroom, particularly in light of the fact, what we've experienced in the last two years. The house that I have, which has five bedrooms, you know, my wife and I each have, the rooms are now offices. So it, it really depends on lifestyle. A lot more people are working from home and using those, what would be a bedroom as an office. So I just, just a sort of caveat.
And I agree with you. During COVID, we did see, we're still in COVID, but we saw a lot of people working from home. But at the same time, if I say had two children, there could be four of us in two bedrooms, you know. So you got to look at it both ways. It could be evened out, but I agree with you. It may be that there's one person per apartment. It could be four, maybe five. Sometimes, depending on the bedroom size, you can fit three people in there. So it, it works both ways. I do understand what you're saying, Nolan. We have seen that. Another question that I'll hope for some answers is the pocket park. It was asked earlier, ownership, a resident's going to be allowed? And this can all wait for the Urban Affairs meeting so you can gather that information. But I'd be curious. Now, the one main thing I'm concerned about is stormwater management. Were you planning any green roofs for all the runoff on that roof up there?
Our engineer, Mr. Salvo, is actually seated in the audience. We didn't have the engineered plans put up on the screen because we thought that most of the emphasis of this hearing would be on the visuals, what you see above ground. But yes, we do have a fully-designed subsurface drainage system to handle stormwater.
So it won't be a green roof, but it will be subsurface. And I'd be curious, I'd like to see that data when you do that.
Yeah, it is actually, it should be in the package that you received. There's a, there's a separate architectural set and a separate sitter set.
I have not seen it, but I will look at it. And I think it should be discussed at our Urban Affairs meeting so that we can dive into it to make sure it's sufficient. Because that's a lot of, how much coverage is there on that property?
Lot of coverage?
Yeah, percent-wise. 75%?
No, 37.
37%?
One half, 75 is allowed, we're half that.
Okay. So you have 63% is lawns and non-driveway and non-coverage. Is that correct?
We have almost 42% open space apart from, you know, driveways and parking area.
So 42% of lawns and so forth, scrubbery. And the other 58%, or 48% would be, no, 58%. Wouldn't that be the coverage?
That would.
42 and 58?
Building coverage, building coverage is 37%.
Yeah.
Open space is, is basically anything, is building minus, minus building and, and area devoted to parking, which, or vehicular use.
Okay. Well, I'll look at that data. I apologize. I haven't had a chance to see that. It was mentioned earlier too, when you're coming down Lincoln Street, and if you go to stop right about where you're entering into your Lincoln Street side of the parking, that open parking, those four spaces, I'd like to see more information on that entrance. Because if you're turning, coming down Lincoln Street, going west, you turn into that, you're going to be stopping the traffic behind you. And I can promise you, coming off Prospect Street, sometimes that traffic's moving pretty fast. So I'd like to see more details. And if traffic reviews, and if traffic reviews were completed on that concerning left turn off of Lincoln Street into that four-space parking area. So if you don't have that data, it'd be nice to see it, to see if it's been done. Because I think it's accident-prone that you could have that happen. You know, I'm, you know what I'm trying to say?
I do, I do. I'm just, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
There was a, the point I wanted to make in response to one of the speakers, and the number of people who basically talked about traffic and the number of vehicle trips and all of that. One thing, and I would take issue with the fact, I think that this project was not well thought out. We have thought it out well from the sustainability aspect. But I want, I was remiss in not mentioning one important aspect about the parking. There's a concept called unbundled, unbundled parking. And that's been prevalent in a number of municipalities and jurisdictions where I practice. Unbundling of parking is separating the parking from the, the rental or the purchase of a unit. And what that does is it allows maximum use of, of the parking spaces. In this particular case, we are going to unbundle these spaces, which means people will come to live, and they'll basically pay for the living space. If they want a car, fine. If they don't want a car, they don't need it. The advantage, the idea is that if you can, you're trying to encourage people to go down to one car. We've been required to provide two spaces because that's what the ordinance says. And that's a tactic, everywhere, that I can tell you, two spaces, except maybe the Cambridge. Cambridge is trying to get rid of parking altogether.
They did.
But in, in Newton, where I grew up, where I live and where I practice a lot, and I'm proud to say that I do live in Newton, despite the fact that, you know, 272 Lincoln Street is not me, and my client has to live in Newton also. But yeah, unbundling of parking is an important tool in, in establishing that you're not going to have too many, you know, your number of trips. The idea is that, and this is, there's always tension in the neighborhood. Do you provide enough parking on site so they're not parking on the street and taking up parking spaces, whether it's for church, for neighbors, or whatever else? Or do you basically reduce the parking? Because that is the direction in which many jurisdictions are going, to discourage people from having two cars per family. Our unbundling would hope to further that kind of objective. And so that what, what it does is, if we assign one space or make one space available to each of the units, and, and some people, you know, and that's, that would leave a number of other spaces, both in the garage and outside, available for visitor parking, which lessens the likelihood that there would be an imposition in the neighborhood at times of great demand outside this offsite.
Thank you. But let me be clear. I am not against two parking spaces per car. We're in the city of Marlborough. Take a survey. You see at least two cars per household in this town. So unfortunately, if we had the infrastructure of Cambridge or Newton, the MBTA doesn't extend out here, even though they make sure we take care of our housing needs for the MBTA. But again, I'm not against those parking spaces. I'm concerned about the entrance to the unb, if we call that, the other parking lot, the four spaces there coming off Lincoln Street. And I'm, what I'm thinking is, maybe it could be a right turn only going into that parking lot and right turn out. But that would be my discussion on that when we get to that. I'm not against the parking spaces, but I am concerned about entering from the left or going out to try to get back left. The left's concerning on that parking lot. And just one other question. You're going to have an elevator required by law. If you have more than 40 units or 30, more than 39, you're going to have two elevators, correct? Is that not correct? I think that's correct.
I think that's right.
Yeah, from what I just went through. I review plans of this nature where I work. Are you going to have an emergency generator in case the power goes out, so the elevator will still work?
Yeah.
Yes. My architect tells me we are, so I have to go with that.
Again, I just didn't see the full plans, but very much needed if you have an elevator. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Oram. I'll go to you last. Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just a couple more clarification on parking. So Councilor Oram was talking about the four spaces that are on Lincoln Street. Can you go to the screen for that? I just want to see the view of that. No, well, the parking up front. So my concern, similar to, or basically, if someone's going to pull into that parking space off of Lincoln Street, are they going to see if all the spaces are being filled before they drive in? You know, so I'm trying to find a parking place. I know there's some parking over there. I pull in, there's no space. Is there going to be adequate space to turn around and try to pull out because there's no, you know, all four spaces are occupied? There's some concern with that. I don't think it's much of a concern for the two spaces off of Cashman Street. The garage door is typically closed?
Yes.
Okay. And members will have a fob?
That's right.
The tenants have a fob to go in. But basically, it seems that, if, can a guest park underneath the garage?
Can a guest park in the garage?
Yes.
Depends on the management of the building.
Yeah, depends on the management, how they're assigned. Because those, those spaces have to talk to be assigned to you.
Okay. Okay. Well, you're talking about open space, you're talking about open parking. So that's why I wanted to bring that up.
The outside spaces were not necessarily.
Yeah, the outside, but they will be posted for, you know, for this property that's not public. And I assume the same for the other four up there. So, okay. Aside from that, you know, I think it's an impressive design. I like the open, the mini park in front because it actually helps with the view. So that you can see Cashman and Lincoln. They don't, there's no obstruction there. So I think that's a real benefit on that side. So, but we'll see what happens in urban. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Councilor Pearlman?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for the presentation. And I really appreciate all the comments from the public. We always love when there's engagement from residents in the city. I had a couple of questions and some comments. The first is, I was going to suggest some developments in the past have been, all the documentation has been available on our city website. I didn't see this one listed. I didn't see this one listed for residents who have more information. So that's something I hope in the future, probably after tonight's meeting, that that will be put up for folks to have some of these renderings. They can zoom in on them, right, and have that information available. And I'm also, I guess, a little confused with the parking setup. So maybe that's something in Urban Affairs that could be provided. Like if you were a car coming from the road, how would it work? Especially with those four spaces at the top. I know you mentioned that they would be designated per unit, which makes sense, but just kind of walking us through that a little bit more in-depth would be very helpful. Has there been a established price point on these units? And what was the selection of the 12 units? Was that based on the size of the lot and what the design encountered?
Well, I can't speak to the price point. That's beyond my pay grade. The number of units, I think, we let, we give our architect free rein, actually. It's largely derived from the ability to provide sufficient parking or the required parking under the ordinance. That really drives the project. And so because we had the ability to put the parking in the building, that allowed us to basically establish the number of units at 12.
Okay, that's helpful to know. And if there is the availability of to do some sort of traffic analysis, I was actually in this area, I believe it was on a Sunday, I did see people parking in this lot for the church. It was a very condensed area, and I was, you know, a driver passing through. So I would be concerned about mitigating some of that and having the traffic patterns more in-depth. And I wondered, you provided many helpful renderings, if there could be an aerial view of the site currently? Because I think my perception and maybe others, the site extends larger than the footprint that we typically see of where the site is right now. I know there's that, but maybe like zoomed in where you could actually see the current building in the site. That might help because in my mind, the site is a lot smaller. So seeing this density is maybe a bit confusing, and that might help alleviate some questions if we had that larger viewpoint. Because it seems like the site extends beyond the paved area, as is indicated. So I wanted to indicate that. I did have questions around the size of the pocket park, you know, if there'd be benches, things around that, so it would be more useful for the public. As was mentioned, right, the rail trail extends already all the way to Main Street. So, you know, signage was mentioned, but also just kind of making that area known as a place that could be used, I think would be useful. And then I guess my, my last question is sort of around, if you could go maybe to one of the elevation images? Yeah, the renderings. Okay, yeah, this is helpful. So in this particular instance, so the garage would be completely underneath all of the units, the entrance way would be from outside, and there's no connection underneath between that and the other four parking spaces, correct?
No.
Okay, so it's completely just, you'd have to only go in through the top side? Okay, that's helpful. So those are just some questions and comments I had, and that would be very helpful to have during Urban Affairs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pearlman. Any other councilors? Councilor Robey?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I can do a gentle reminder to my fellow city councilors, when we set up a public hearing like this, it is always on the council agenda. And before that council agenda, the petitioner has to send a packet to the city clerk, 11 copies, actually 11 copies for the city council, one for the clerk, and one for somebody else. So if you will all look back at your October 17th packet, for those of you who get a paper packet, you will find this in it. It'll be copies, but you should also look for the packet that you get, were given probably the week before that actual meeting. I will also remind the public that this project has two parts, not only Urban Affairs, but it has to go to Site Plan. And Site Plan is made up, I always forget, the Marlborough Fire Department, the Marlborough Police Department, Conservation, DPW Engineering. So all of those building plans and underground will be looked at very thoroughly by engineering. It also has the Board of Health who will be looking at this. So Site Plan will give us their opinion. They will take this and pick it apart and make all kinds of things known to the builder that they would suggest, suggest changes to the project maybe, ask questions. And then we'll give all that information to the city council on their opinion. So I don't remember if Site, have you been to Site Plan? I guess, I go to Site Plan, but then I forget who has been. So have you gone for a preliminary? You haven't been at all?
No, we haven't, no.
Okay, so you will eventually be going to Site Plan. Once we know Site Plan has an opinion, then I can set up a Urban Affairs Committee meeting to take this out. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Robey. Any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Hearing done, I closed that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this item is in Urban Affairs.
Mr. President, if I beg your indulgence.
Sure, Terry.
I would like to thank you, Mr. President, and members for courteous, for having us here. I particularly appreciate the fact that I haven't been able to do this in person for more than two years, and I love the give and take, and it's real. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we now have, I'll let the clerk catch up. You ready? All right, Agenda Item Number Seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $10,000 from the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency, MIA, awarded to the public facilities to be used to evaluate the HVA systems in three fire stations, the police station and the Whitcomb School, and to provide the city with an analysis report and recommendations.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant, please.
Motion made in second to approve the grant. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, grant is approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $42,300 from the Department of Housing and Community Development and the Massachusetts Development Finance Agency, awarded to Marlborough Economic Development Corporation, to be used to secure technical assistance in drafting zoning ordinances, mapping build-out analysis, community outreach, preliminary compliance review assistance, and implementation efforts in compliance with the Section 3A MBTA Communities Guidelines.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant.
Motion made in second to approve the grant. Grant, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the grant is approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $60,205 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety, awarded to the police department to be used to support additional traffic safety equipment and increased enforcement efforts.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant.
Motion's made in second to approve the grant. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding transfer request in the amount of $100,000, which moves funds from the Undesignated Fund to unemployment payment for school, for city and schools to fund mandated unemployment costs.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion's made in second to refer to the Finance Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is referred to Finance, 11-0. Agenda Item Number 11.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $1,154,893.76, which moves funds from meals tax revenue account to fund fiscal year '23 bond payments associated with the parks and recreation improvements.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. The local options meals tax revenue account is set up to fund the parks and fields per the FY 2023 budget process. Motion to approve the transfer in the amount of $1,154,893.76, please.
Motion made in second to approve the transfer to pay the bond payment for the turf fields. Any discussion on the motion? Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to get a clarification based upon the information that's provided about this item. There was previously $1,266,020.38 minus the $1,154,893.76, leaves remaining of $111,126.62. That's right. Sound about right?
Sounds correct, Mr. President.
About $111,000 left in the fund after this transfer.
That would be correct. I believe, that's correct. And I believe the next will be coming in in December.
About 300K of WAC.
We'll get about 300,000. And as COVID's gone past, more and more folks are going to restaurants, we're getting more and more meal tax. So by the time we make this transfer next year, our fiscal year '24 payment is $1,075,000. It decreases each year. Hopefully, our restaurant revenues continue to improve. We should have sufficient funds to pay that one, and then it pays all the way down till we pay it off in 2030.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments on the motion to approve the transfer? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the transfer is approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number 12.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Richard Tominek to the Board of Health for a three-year term to expire on May 5, 2024.
Council Dumas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Refer to personnel.
Motion's made in second to refer to the Personnel Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is referred to Personnel, 11-0. Agenda Item Number 13.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed tax increment financing agreement with PILP, who anticipate moving their operations from Auburn Mass to 130 Lazott Drive.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion's made in second to refer the tip to the Finance Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved to go to Finance, 11-0. Agenda Item 14.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding the application for a signed special permit from Wayside Crossing for an EMC sign that will serve as the ordering board for Starbuck's drive-through at 661 Boston Post Road East in proper legal form or number 22-108724.
Council Robey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to accept and place on file the communication and move the actual order down to Agenda Item Number 27.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file the solicitor's communication and move the item down to Agenda Item Number 27. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is filed and moved to Agenda Item Number 27, 11-0. Agenda Item 15.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding a request for executive session to discuss litigation strategy relative to City of Marlborough versus Town of Northborough.
Council Pearlman?
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor has communicated to us an intention to move the date of this, so motion to accept and place on file the communication.
Motion's made in second to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is filed, 11-0. Agenda Item 16.
Communication from the Planning Board regarding a favorable recommendation on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Section 40, location and height of buildings relative to attached roofs and entryway porches.
Council Robey?
Oh, I'm sorry, I got lost in my agenda. Move to accept and place on file the communication.
Motion's made in second to accept and place on file the Planning Board communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the communication is filed, 11-0. Agenda Item 17.
Petition from National Grid to install a handhole and run conduit from pole 14 to handhole at 157 Cook Lane.
Councilor Landers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Service Committee and set a date for a public hearing.
Motion's made in second to refer to Public Service and we'll set a public hearing for December 5. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Public Service with a December 5 public hearing, 11-0. Agenda Item 18.
Petition from National, petition from National Grid to install a push brace off pole number 18 on Mechanic Street, which is needed to support a pole with wires going down Manning Street.
Councilor Landers?
Again, thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Service Committee and set a date for a public hearing.
Motion's made in second to refer to Public Service and we'll set a public hearing for December 5. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 11-0, to go to Public Service with a public hearing on December 5, 11-0. Agenda Item 19.
Communication from William Camuso on behalf of Camuso Enterprises LLC regarding a request pursuant to Chapter 342, gasoline stations and car washes, for permission to continue to operate at the hours granted at 431 Lincoln Street.
Council Robey?
Thank you, Mr. President. So in September 14 of 2020, we did approve a special permit for Mr. Caruso to operate. I'm not sure if that's actually the right one that I'm picking up. But the special permit does allow for extensions up to five years, or we can go with one year. I have talked to the Ward Counselor, and he would, is requesting that we do a single year renewal at this point in time. I don't see the need to refer this to committee to have a lengthy discussion if that is the choice. We could certainly do that. But I'm going to move to approve the continuation of the special permit for one year, subject to them meeting the sign permit, LED language. If you look at the current sign at the very bottom where the sign prices are, there's a sign that says deli and pizza. If you look at the sign permit, it doesn't have that sign there. So that needs to be removed, and it needs to stay just the prices of the gasoline at the station. If that doesn't happen, then their renewal doesn't happen. Is that clear to everybody? One-year renewal, subject to them removing the deli and pizza sign.
And their renewal, I believe, is in February, right?
Their renewal is technically February. This just, he's anticipating maybe the need to go to public or to have this go to Urban Affairs. But yes, it does, this would not start until February, but he has time to remove the sign.
Motion made in second to approve the renewal of the hour of operation as stated in the special permit contingent upon the removal of the deli pizza sign? Does that have that right?
Pizza sign.
Councilor Arm?
Just curious. Obviously, we'll notify him of this vote, but should the applicant know if they wish to put up a sign that wasn't permitted? There's a process to go through?
Yeah, if the sign's not permitted, the building or the apartment would typically pick up on that.
Okay, and they will let them know if you want to see a sign approved? Because we have other gas stations with Dunkin' Donuts signs. So there's a process. As long as they know that, I think in fairness to the applicant, they'd be given some notification. Not allowed, wasn't approved, but if you wish to go through the process, this is what you do. I would hope we add that to the language when they get notified. Thank you.
You're welcome, Councilor Arm. So on the motion that's made in seconded two, I'll think about this. We're going to extend the hours for another year as identified in the special permit and have the deli pizza sign portion that's not currently allowed removed in order for the applicant to get that one-year extension. So he basically has three months to get an application and to approve that sign. That's my subtle way of saying, if he can. And you're saying, no, he can't? Okay, well, Karen says we can't, we can have. So he'll have opportunity to approve that portion of the sign to come and get a revised sign permit, right?
Yes. I'm not exactly sure how it works when the special permit has in one year. You get a copy of this special permit and the LED sign are two separate.
Sounds like this is going to Urban Affairs.
Sorry.
Message for sign approval, a rendering showing exactly what the sign looked like. So we want to add anything? He asked to carry the special permit.
Right. Yeah, that's fine, but he's got to come before us to get that approved, right?
Yes.
That's fine.
But I would point out that the special permit is specifically for an electronic message center sign and display for the gas station prices. That's what we approved, and we approved a picture with it. He is not following what the LED special permit says.
Right, so that's a simple, tell the Board of Health to go, I mean, enforcement officer to go write them up, to go remove it. And that's.
They have been asked, and as far as I know, have not acted, but maybe they will get the message tonight.[1715.51] They have been asked, and as far as I know, have not acted, but maybe they will get the message tonight, if not, he doesn't get his extension if that remains, I believe.
Okay, that is, that is the vote, okay, so is everybody clear, and I'll restate it again. Counsel Wagner.
So, I mean, I'd have to go by and look at it, but what I'm hearing is, and I get it, that that wasn't approved, we don't want to, what, re-approve, extend the hours if the sign doesn't get changed, but it sounds like, I'd have to see the sign, but is this person, do they need to go and, oh, get this approved, so it's part of a sign, so is there any way to, I mean, if the process is in place, these things take time, if the process in place to get the permit, can, I feel like we need to just work with the person, it's not like it's a glaring neon sign that's blinking, where, you know, something, it says, deli and pizza feels very, seems like something we could work with, so I'm concerned about attaching, if it doesn't get completely approved, then the hours now revert back to the old hours, it feels cumbersome.
So, I guess Counsel Robie, based on, it's, it's, I'll admit, after hearing what you're telling me, it's kind of unusual to put that condition, I would recommend it goes to Urban Affairs, and have him come here and say, is he going to get rid of the sign, yep, come back, tell us it's done, then we'll approve your thing, because this, it's not going to work this way, I can see all sorts of headaches, my opinion, you guys can weigh in, Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel Robie, the whole part of the process is, this vote is to extend the operating hours that we had approved in Urban, it also gives the council an opportunity at a time when we're renewing this, and I support renewing this annually, this is an opportunity that we get feedback from the Chief of Police, Building Department, et cetera, so these are two separate issues, originally, we did approve the signage for an LED illuminating sign, I don't really want to go back and hash that, but they're two separate items, tonight is an opportunity that we have the discretion to approve, to extend his operating hours from, from one year to five years, at this point, I am in full support extending the operating hours, extending those hours annually, and with that, with that pending removal of the sign, which are two separate items, but this is an opportunity for the council to see something, how the, the wheels are turning, and how it all works throughout different feedback from other, from other department heads, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Irish, Counsel Ducey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, I see this as a carrot and stick situation, where basically, you know, we made an agreement to what the sign was going to look like, what's there now isn't what we agreed with, let's send it to Urban, have the conversation, have the, have the person come out, talk to us about this, figure out how it goes, we have until February to get this thing straightened out, you don't have to pass it tonight, and considering the conversation we're having here, I don't think we're at a point where we should approve it this quickly, thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President, hearing comments, I'm going to move to refer this to Urban Affairs.
Do you want to withdraw your motion, just to keep us clean?
Well, I don't even know that it had a second, so.
I did second it, so.
Then I withdraw the original motion. And move to refer this to Urban Affairs.
Okay, the original motion's been removed from the table, now it's a motion to refer to Urban Affairs, any discussion on the motion to send to Urban Affairs? Seeing none, all those in favor sending to Urban Affairs, it's going to Urban Affairs eleven zero. Thank you, Counsel Robie. Agenda item twenty.
Application for a special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Octo Forty-eight LLC DBA Action Precision Machining to convert a pre-existing non-conforming warehouse use to a machine shop at two sixty-nine Mechanic Street.
Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move to refer this to Urban Affairs, to set a public hearing date for December nineteenth, and to advertise.
Motion made in second to refer to Urban Affairs, set a public hearing for December nineteenth, and to advertise, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, it is going to Urban Affairs with a public hearing, December nineteenth, and to advertise, eleven zero. Agenda item twenty-one.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Mr. President.
Counsel Ducey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file all the minutes, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, the minutes are filed eleven zero. Claims.
Mr. President.
Counsel Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to refer to the Legal Department.
Motion made in seconded to refer to the Legal Department, I forgot to mention, did you talk to Counsel Ducey?
I did, yes.
Okay, super service, motion, I apologize, Counsel Ducey, motion made in seconded to refer to the Legal Department, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, it is going to Legal eleven zero. Reports of Committees. Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President, the City Council Personnel Committee met on November fourteenth at six P M, the first item on the agenda was Order number twenty-two dash one hundred eighty-six sixty-three A, sorry, appointment of Cheryl Sussi to the Disabilities Commission for a three-year term to expire October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, Counsel Navin, motion to approve, I was seconded by the Chair, it was voted three to zero. Order number twenty-two dash one hundred eighty-six sixty-four B, it's the appointment of Adrian Gilbert to the Historical Commission for a term expiring three years from the City Council confirmation, motion by Counsel Ducey, seconded by the Chair, and then that was approved three to zero, then lastly, on the agenda was Order number twenty-two dash one hundred eighty-six zero nine, it's the appointment of N. Paul Tonthat to the Community Development Authority, also known as the C D A, for a three-year term to expire March twenty-fifth, to fill the position vacated by Josh Daigle, and then who moved on to the state-appointed seat, and then the reappointments of Paul Slaney for a term to expire on March ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, that was motion by Counsel Ducey, seconded by the Chair, and then that was approved three to zero, and then we adjourned, adjourned at six thirteen, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dumas, who's next, Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President, Finance Committee met on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at seven zero five P M, we had one item on the agenda that evening, Order number twenty-two dash one hundred eight seven zero one, communication from Mayor Vision with proposed amendment to City Code, Chapter one twenty-five Personnel, Section six, salary schedule, and proposed job description pursuant to Chapter one twenty-five Personnel, Section five, preparation of classification descriptions, to create a new position entitled Treasury Payroll Manager within the Finance Department, Chair Irish read the order into the record, Director Jones and Mayor Vision explained the administration's reasons for the new managerial position in the Finance Department to provide payroll services, on a motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by Chair Irish, the committee voted to recommend approval of the salary schedule and job description for the new position, Treasury Payroll Manager, as requested by the mayor, the vote, vote carried four to one, four zero, one absent, and the meeting adjourned at seven thirty-two P M, and I will be asking for one suspension this evening to advertise, Mr. President.
Motion's made in second to suspend the rules, all those in favor of the suspension, opposed, suspension is approved, ten zero. Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President, motion to advertise, Order number twenty-two dash one hundred eight seven zero one, please.
Motion made in seconded to advertise a salary ordinance, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, salary ordinance will be advertised, ten zero. Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to have the city clerk set a public hearing and to advertise the tax classification hearing for December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, please.
Motion made in seconded to ask the clerk to advertise the tax classification hearing for Monday, December fifth, at eight o'clock, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, the tax classification is approved, well, we'll, we'll, clerk to go advertise the tax classification hearing for Monday, December fifth, at eight o'clock, eleven zero. Uh, who else, who's next, Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President, Public Service Committee meeting met on November fourteenth, and we took up only one order, and that was order number two-two one zero zero eight-six nine five, petition of Verizon Wireless for the installation of a small cell wireless facility to be located on pole thirty-four within the layout of the public way near three eighty-five Farm Road, Ms. Litton and Verizon team addressed the petition for a small cell wireless facility on pole number thirty-four near three eighty-five, stating the site will resolve the coverage gap in the neighborhood, she presented an outline in the report provided to the councils addressing other poles in the area, as evidence why pole number thirty-four was chosen, and best way to fill the gap in the coverage, by the way, this is probably, we've done a few of these, this is probably the, the one that we've received most of the material upfront, it was very good, I was kind of interested in going through why pole number thirty-four was picked over some of the other poles, but I drove up and down Farm Road, quite honestly, they, they looked all the same to me. But the team submitted a small cell site, it, it, the site below the R F emissions allowed under the regulations established by the F C C, and explains the F C C category of small cell is under fifty feet, there was no questions concerning, questions concerning regarding the draft decision by Ms. Litton, on a motion by Counsel Irish, seconded by the Chair, the committee recommended approval of the petition, the petition of Verizon for the installation of a small cell wireless facility to be located on pole thirty-four within the layout of a public near three eighty-five, together with the conditions, important, submitted by the city engineer, incorporated in the draft decision from the, from the city solicitor, voted in favor, two zero, one absent, so that's my report, Mr. President, what I'd like to do is ask for suspension, or we could vote on this tonight.
To send to the solicitor.
Send the solicitor, okay.
Motion to suspend the rules, all those in favor of the suspension, opposed, rule suspended, Counsel Landers.
Okay, so the motion is to vote on this, and included, we'll send it to the, the city, the assistant city solicitor.
So you're going to send, motion to send it to the solicitor to put in proper format, is that the motion?
Yep.
Motion made in seconded to send to the solicitor to put in proper format, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, it's going to the solicitor, be placed in proper format, eleven zero. Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President, the City Council Urban Affairs and Housing Committee met on November fourteenth, we had one item on our agenda, Order number twenty-two one hundred eight six seven nine, a petition for a zoning amendment, Chapter six fifty, Section forty, location and height of buildings relative to attached roofs and entryways, porches in proper form, from Solicitor Grossfield on behalf of Councilors Ossing and Navin, the City Council held its public hearing on October third, the Chair read the letter from Planning Board Chairperson Finby stating that they held a public hearing on November seventh, and sent a five to zero favorable recommendation without further guidance on the proposed council order, and that communication was accepted this evening, Counsel Ossing gave a brief overview of the history behind the order, and Counsel Navin spoke on the merits, Counsel Navin moved to approve, Counsel Ducey seconded, and it carried five to nothing, I did state at the meeting that the order was in proper form, and no amendments were offered, so I'm going to ask for a suspension tonight to be able to vote on the proposed zoning amendment, and it is an ordinance, so it needs to go through the stages if this suspension carries.
Then motion to suspend the rules, all those in favor of the suspension, opposed, suspension is approved, eleven zero, Counsel Robie.
Thank you, I move to approve the proposed zoning amendment that is in proper form from the solicitor.
It's been a motion made in seconded to approve the ordinance that's in proper form as submitted by the solicitor, any discussion before we go through the four stages? Everybody's good? All those in favor suspending the first reading and approving the second reading, please signify, eleven zero. All those in favor of passage to be enrolled, please signify, eleven zero. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained, please signify, eleven zero. Is there any objection to the ordinance being approved in one evening? Seeing none, the ordinance is approved. Thank you, Counsel Navin, thank you, Counsel Robie. Okay, any other reports of committees? Everybody else good? Okay, moving on, Agenda item number twenty-three.
Order number twenty-two dash one hundred eight five eight seven, application for a taxi livery license from Nathan Cebulia, DBA Indelible Home Care Inc. to operate a livery service with one vehicle at ninety-seven Neal Street, recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President, motion to approve.
Motion made in seconded to approve the livery license, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, livery license approved, eleven zero. Agenda item number twenty-four.
Order number twenty-two dash one hundred eight six six nine, application for renewal of a junk dealer, secondhand dealer license by Best Buy Stores LP number eight twenty-seven sixty-nine Donald J. Lynch Boulevard, recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President, motion to approve.
Motion made in seconded to approve the junk dealer license for Best Buy, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, junk dealer license, junk dealer license approved, eleven zero. Agenda item number twenty-five.
Order number twenty-two dash one hundred eight seven one one, application for renewal of a license, renewal of license to operate a livery service with one vehicle by Edward Zoladev, DBA Easy Airport Limo Service, fifteen Indian Lane, recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President, motion to approve.
Motion made in seconded to approve the livery license, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, livery license is approved, eleven zero. Agenda item number twenty-six.
Order number twenty-two dash one hundred eight six seven eight, proposed salary ordinance pursuant to Chapter one twenty-five Personnel, Section six, salary schedule to create a new position entitled Substance Use Prevention Coordinator and Intervention Specialist within the Health Department with a seven-step salary table, minimum of fifty-eight thousand dollars to a maximum of sixty-five thousand three hundred seventeen dollars and forty-two cents for a thirty-five-hour work week, together with a proposed job description pursuant to Chapter one twenty-five Personnel, Section five, preparation of classification descriptions, this matter was ordered advertised at the November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two City Council meeting, the advertisement was published on Friday, November eighteenth, action cannot be taken until the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two City Council meeting to comply with the ten-day period required in the charter.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President, motion to postpone to December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two City Council meeting, please.
Motion made in seconded to postpone to our December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two City Council meeting, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, it is postponed to December fifth. Agenda item number twenty-seven.
Order number twenty-two dash one hundred eight seven two four, application for a signed special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Wayside Crossing for a proposed EMC sign that will serve as an ordering board for the Starbucks drive-through at six sixty-one Boston Post Road East, this matter was ordered advertised at a public hearing scheduled at the November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two City Council meeting.
Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President, as was stated earlier, this item was on the agenda, we had moved the actual documentation down to the order, or to item number twenty-seven, I'm going to move to approve the application for a signed special permit from Attorney Falk.
Motion's been made in seconded to approve the signed special per, the special permit for the sign at six sixty-one Boston Post Road East, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to read the conditions.
City Council pursuant to its authority under Chap, under Section five, twenty-six, thirteen, of the site ordinance hereby grants the applicant an EMC sign special permit for the sign, subject to the following conditions, which condition shall be binding on the applicant, its successors and/or signs, one, the sign shall, shall be operated in accordance with the sign ordinance, two, the sign shall be turned off when the coffee shop restaurant is not open for business, three, all plans and/or other documentation provided by the applicant is part of the application, and is amended during the application and hearing process before the City Council are incorporated into and become part of this EMC sign special permit, and become conditions and requirements of the same unless otherwise altered by the City Council, four, the applicant shall take measures necessary to ensure compliance with the City of Marlboro's Noys Ordinance, Chapter four thirty-one of the City Code, at the site.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay, the motion's been made in second, the conditions have been read, to approve the signed special permit, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Counsel Ducey.
Yes.
Counsel Oram.
Yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Yes.
Counsel Irish.
Yes.
Counsel Landers.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Yes.
Counsel Robie.
Yes.
Counsel Navin.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. Signed special permit is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President, as typical fashion for our trustee, City Council Assistant, she has told me that at the last meeting when I moved to accept and place on file the master sign plan, that in fact, we actually need to approve it, so hopefully, the fact that we did have discussion on it, it was on our last meeting's agenda, I'm going to move to make it formal, and move to approve the master sign plan.
Motion made in second to approve the master sign plan, any discussion on the motion? Counsel Ducey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, we are talking about the Wayside Crossing master sign plan, just.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're talking about, there's so many around here, you know, thank you.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of the master sign plan approval, opposed, the master sign plan is approved, eleven zero. Counsel Dumas.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made in seconded to adjourn, all those in favor, opposed, we are adjourned at nine forty-nine, eleven zero.